Good afternoon, everybody. Top of the hour, and we're ready to go through our presentation on the proposed 2026 budget. Our presenters are Kim Wannick and Lynda McIntyre, and they have prepared a deck, which you had a chance to get a copy of back there. And at the conclusion of that, we'll open for questions and just see where it goes from there. So, guys, we did that.
Okay. Are we ready?
Good afternoon, everyone. As Tom said, I'm Lynda McIntyre, a member of the Budget, Finance, and Audit Committee, and a member of the Five-Year Planning Team, and I'd like to welcome all of you here today, including those joining us on the live stream. I think Mike just mentioned there's 11 members watching. Members of the Board of Directors, staff, and a special welcome to our new GM, Rebecca Hill. And a fine way to start your first day here. Some of you may not have met her earlier today at the exchange, but welcome to RCSC, and we're looking forward to working with you and having you on the RCSC team. Today's town hall is presented by the Budget, Finance Committee and Audit Committee, as Tom said. Seated at the table are Anita Borsky, co-chair of Finance and Audit, and Tom Foster, who's the chair. And because of the impact of the golf on our operating in capital, Preston Kice is with us as the Chair of the Golf Advisory Committee, also known as GAC, and he's going to be our timekeeper today. And as Tom mentioned, Kim Wannick is a co-presenter with me, and we're both members of the Five-Year Planning Team, as well as Budget and Finance, which was started in early 2024. I want to thank our media team, Alan Kleinhans, sitting over here, and also we have Miguel Jackson up in the booth. And Mike Dermeier, who's Director of Operations, who's operating our livestream. A couple of housekeeping items. If you please put your phones on silent, and please hold your questions until the end, and we'll explain the process for how we're going to handle our in-house questions and those questions from our livestream audience. So let's get to the agenda. So the first topics on the agenda will be your money at work in 2025. Well, actually, I'm going to back up a little bit. The role of the Budget and Finance Committee, first of all, just to give you a little bit of a background. Our oversight is the responsibility to oversee budget, or the operating budget and the capital The operating budget, income and expenses, and the capital, as I said, okay, sorry. PIF, which is the Property Improvement Fee, is managed by Long-Range Planning Committee, and although we collaborate with that committee as part of the Five-Year Planning Team, this presentation is focused solely on operating and capital and will not be part of our discussion today. We're going to talk about your money at work in 2025. Everyone that's lived here for over a year, or a couple of years, has realized that we had some significant increases in the assessment. So we're going to do a little bit of a brief review about what you got for your money in 2025. Then we're going to go into the proposed operating budget. We're sure that's why you're all here today, to know what's going to happen in 2026, especially with the assessment increase proposed for 2026. In bullet number three, we're going to talk about what your money's going to do for you in 2026. We'll explain some of the differences that will impact 2026, including some new initiatives, programming changes that we believe will not only be, that are not only proactive, but we think that you'll find more value added to the Sun City lifestyle that we all enjoy. Bullet number four, these are the challenges that we're facing. These are topics that the Committee and the Five-Year Team have faced, and the Board is going to face. And you as members need to be aware of that we're not hiding from these challenges. We're trying to find solutions, and as members, we want you to keep in mind the scope of RCSC and what it takes in terms of human and financial resources to manage this large organization. Remember, we have eight centers, eight golf courses with snack shops, and two bowling alleys. We have a large lake, pretty large lake for Sun City, that provides numerous recreational opportunities. We have 120-plus clubs of all types. We have a theater. We have recreational venues, including tennis, lawn bowling, pickleball, mini golf, a dog park, a softball field, the Sun Bowl, and lots of free entertainment. Plus, the upkeep of all the accessory buildings that we have for the golf courses, other accessory buildings for maintenance, and acres of surrounding landscape for all of our buildings. So with all of that, Kim, let's get started with how all of this works.
Lynda, thank you very much, and again, thank you for spending time with us today. As Lynda shared earlier, we're going to focus our conversation today on operating and capital, but let's think about we as members, what do we pay for? I'm going to focus first on the right-hand portion of this slide. When you purchase a home, there's a one-time fee today, PIF. Second is capital improvement fees, and then we have the annual assessment that we pay. For RCSC purposes and for budget purposes, we contain each of these in the three different buckets. If we personalize this and think about our own homes, PIF, let's think about the Preservation Improvement Fund. Maybe you're going to remodel something, a bathroom, a kitchen. You're going to put on an addition or a patio. Capital Improvement, think that car repair, new tires, air conditioning repair. Annual Assessment are your operating expenses. How do you keep things moving on a day-by-day basis? Your housekeeping supplies, your food, your insurance cost. Just those are some of the things to go ahead and think about. And as Lynda alluded to, this conversation for today is solely going to focus what goes into the budget, and that is our annual assessment fees as well as our capital improvement fees. You see this blue arrow, I'm going to try this little clicker here, which has a green, you can see this blue arrow. We are now sharing 4% of the annual assessment fees into the capital improvement fees. My conversation topics with you today will be focusing solely on the operation expenses. Lynda, throughout the remainder of the presentation, is going to be focusing on those capital improvement fees. And the reason behind allocating some of those dollars over into the capital improvement fees, quite frankly, are some of the needs that we have as a community. So let's go ahead and dive just a little bit deeper, and let's take a look at our piggy bank. We're going to focus on where do our funds come in to feed the piggy bank, and what is the outflow or outgoing funds that we have with our piggy bank? We as members feed the piggy bank almost every day. We feed it by our annual assessments. If you're a golfer, a bowler, if you choose to eat at a snack shop, buy a beer, if you have a guest that you are bringing to go ahead and have fun at one of the pools, the ticketed event sales, transfer fees, and then those members that have privileged cards. They don't own a home here, but maybe they're a renter. That's everything that comes in to feed that piggy bank from an operational perspective on an annual basis. And just to give you an idea, in 2025, the annual assessments accounted for just shy of $16 million of inflow into that piggy bank. Golf fed the piggy bank by about $9.4 million in 2025. Now, if we go to the outgoing portion, where are we spending our money? We have 488 team members that keep RCSC running on a daily basis. The facility attendants, the janitors, everyone that you can think of in card member services, accounting, golf, those sorts of activities that we enjoy. We also are paying for upkeep on pool maintenance, equipment and furniture. You've seen some of those investments at some of the pools and throughout some of the club activities. Utility costs, we'll get into that a little bit later. Infrastructure with our information technology. Obviously, we're doing some upgrades in this area, so we have expenses on the data lines and internet services, along with keeping those golf courses in playable condition with chemicals, fertilizer, and seed, our janitorial supplies, as well as our insurance costs. So just a quick visual for you here on what feeds the budget on an ongoing basis. What I wanted to do is spend a little bit of time with you on talking about some of our top spends. Wages and benefits. We talked about earlier the large expense that we have here of about $16 million. We talked about we have 488 employees, about 64% of those are part-time staff for us. Now, like you, I relocated from another state here, and one of the things that was shocking to me was the minimum wage in the state of Arizona. Today, that minimum wage in 2025 is $14.70. Five of our states from the Midwest area are $10.25. So there's a great difference there. If you're a member from Canada, your provinces, much like the states here, vary, and it varies anywhere from 11 to 16, plus you have the exchange rate that you're dealing with as well. So one of the focuses we had as a committee over the past couple of years is we had to figure out how to decrease the turnover that was occurring. We were at a rate at one point in time of about 40%. We were basically training staff to go work elsewhere and achieve a higher wage. We since have stemmed that by increasing those wages and thereby reducing the turnover average to 24%. So these are strategies that have been deployed to manage that particular area. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the capital side, the other portion of the budget, and Lynda's going to go through, what did you see in 2025?
Thanks, Kim. You'll notice the header on this slide says Capital Projects from the Reserve Study. So first, I'm going to do a quick explanation of what is the Reserve Study, because that's sort of a foreign topic or foreign terminology. As our Finance Director, Kevin McCurdy, often says, it's a living, breathing document, which it really identifies and continuously evaluates every piece of equipment that we own, every building, every piece of property owned by the RCSC. I think of it in terms of, and the best way to explain it, is a comprehensive asset management plan or program. It includes the date of every purchase of every piece of property, its price, its expected life expectancy, and its replacement date, or expected replacement date, its estimated future replacement cost, and the cost and details of every single project that's done by facilities or any part of the RCSC team. If equipment is taken out of service and not replaced, it's removed from the Reserve Study. This Reserve Study is under constant review, and as we've said, it's that living, breathing document. The last time that it was updated, when we started reviewing all this through the Finance and Budget and the Five-Year Planning Team, it came to our attention, it was in 2018. So a new project was undertaken, I believe this was in 2023, if Kevin acknowledged that, and this has resulted in a very proactive approach to tackle what came about is that kind of unfortunate term that's been floating around was a long overdue, a lot of deferred maintenance. So going back to what happened in 2025, as we started, in 2024, actually, but this is what happened in 2025. We had Capital Projects from the Reserve Study, and these are all the projects that were listed. If you want to highlight these a little bit, Kim. The budget was $5.7 million, and as it's categorized by this slide. We had HVAC, which is a huge, obviously a huge cost throughout to keep these buildings heated and cooled, or cooled, obviously, and heated if we needed during the winter months. Paving, we obviously have a lot of parking lots in eight buildings, the Sun Bowl, the Softball Field, and so on. Golf equipment, this was the entire budget for golf equipment. Pool decking and pool equipment. Pool decking continues to be an ongoing issue, obviously. I'll talk a little bit about pools in the 2026. And games, this was Fairway. This is the lawn bowling facility at Fairway, and it's my understanding that this is still ongoing because there's issues with getting materials. IT is ongoing, as with any organization in this day of changing technologies and upgrading technologies, and then all other miscellaneous projects and programs. So this was the capital budget for 2025, and some of these are still in progress, and the expectation is that these will be completed, hopefully all be completed by the end of 2025. But it's important to note on the Reserve Study that just because something is due to be replaced, let's say in 2028, the facilities team and people responsible for whatever portion of that Reserve Study looks at something and says, no, we think we can, you know, get another couple of years' life out of this, that piece of equipment moves out and is evaluated and maybe can move out to 2030. Likewise, something can be on the Reserve Study for, say, 2029, and lo and behold, next month it dies. Well, then a decision has to be made. Now we have to find a place on the budget. It moves in, we need to replace it, and as we say, it's a balancing act, or sometimes it becomes the ballet. So we have to find the money to do it. Then we had the 2025 Club Projects. At the top of this list is vintage vehicles at $200,000. That really is a special project that was authorized to work on the continuing problems with the cooling at the vintage clubs. Clubs are actually allocated 5% of the capital budget for their projects, and this was new as part of BP16, which was done as a result of some new policies that were developed so that we could actually have accurate allocations and not just, better term, but probably winging it for how the clubs were allocated funds. The COC, or the Committee on Clubs, was also represented on the Five-Year Planning Team, which they hadn't been represented in the past. Clubs provide a list of their projects for review for the club's office. Then this list is provided to the Facilities Department for Budget and Pricing. Then that goes back to the Committee on Clubs to prioritize, and then they submit their final budget to the Budget and Finance Committee. So there's a new process now for clubs, which I think has worked out much better than it did in the past when they sort of felt like they were getting, maybe getting the leftovers of any money that might have been allocated. So the actual budget for 2025 was $289,400 plus that additional 200 that was approved for the vintage clubs. So I think that covers the clubs.
Lynda, thank you. So that wraps up 2025, and what did your money do for you? So let's fast forward to what do we see for 2026. Here's our piggy bank again. No changes on the incoming or the outgoing. The only changes are going to be the dollars. So we talked about in 2025, the incoming funds for annual assessments were just shy of $16 million. We're going to be just shy of about $17 million this year, reason being that minimum wage is increasing about 3%. We also, though, are decreasing some headcount at RCSC as well. And golf, we're remaining about flat with where we were last year. So those are our big incoming funds for 2026. Golf will be about $9.3 million, and we're going to get into a little bit later in our conversation, some of the ideas that the Golf Advisory Committee has been talking about with the addition of our new golf manager, Eddie, sitting to my left. On the expense side, again, on the wages, we just talked about that a little bit. So what I want to do is get into what are we looking at as far as some revenue assumptions with the various fees that we have? So one of the things that we know that is very important to everyone in this room and those that are present live streaming is, what are you going to do for the assessment coming forward in 2026? Last year, we obviously had recommended and brought forth a fairly significant, sizable assessment. This year, not so drastic, moving up $30 from $650 to $680. If we go ahead and take a look at that increase, it's an increase of 8 cents per day. If you look at and break it down on a daily basis, from 2025, we're going from $1.78 a day to $1.87 a day. Again, those amenities that Lynda had alluded to earlier, that we have the opportunity to go ahead and use on a daily basis. The privilege card, you will see as the annual assessment increases incrementally, that privilege card increases automatically as well, according to Board policy. So that privilege card is going to increase from $325 to $340. I want to talk also about the transfer fee. So the transfer fee occurs when a home is purchased. That transfer fee of $300 had been in place since 1987. If we normalize that dollar value to today's dollar value, that would actually be $800. We made a decision to go with a $500 increase for 2026. Golf passes, let's run through these fairly quickly. On the golf pass, non-resident, no cart, no change. I believe there's a change in when the payment of that occurs. That will occur in January versus the scheduled October of 2025, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Golf pass resident, no fee, going from $2,500 to $2,800. The golf pass resident surcharge, going from $1,200 to $1,300. Greens fees public, no change at 61. Slight increase on the guest from 53 to 55. Also, a slight increase for the cardholder greens fees from 41 to 43. Bowling also, some increases on the resident from $290 to $3. Open bowling, non-resident, $3.75 to $4. And then events or the show tickets are remaining the same at $25. So this budget that we're running through and presenting to you today, these are the various assumptions that are taking place from a fee perspective, or the feeding the piggy bank, if you will. So what does the budget look like? Here is the overall, and we'll drill down on this into the individual cost centers on the next slide, but big picture, we have for you the 2025 that we're currently still operating under and the proposed 2026. So for operating income, you see about 29.2, top line here, and then for 2026, up to 30.2. The cost of sales, this is our food, our merchandise, our snacks, our beverages, that sort of thing. So then we get into our expense side of the equation. We've talked about the wages and benefits. I'm going to run through for you some of the top spends that we have on repairs and maintenance, utilities, and then you see our general operating expenses here. So net operating excess, where we are projecting to end the year, is $1,988, and then we're looking at $1,854 for 2026. If we look at the individual cost centers, and let's define these a little bit, that's why I've got my cheat sheet here in front of me. Facilities, think of this as project management and our ground maintenance. Operations, centers, bowling, events, and communications, so center management. Golf is going to be golf maintenance, pro shops, food and beverages. Finance is going to be accounting, cardholder services, human resources, purchasing, information technology, and safety. Our two leading cost centers, and this should not be surprising, are operations, it's keeping those centers functioning, the lights on in those, and golf. And so you can see where the breakdown is, wages and benefits, that's where the bulk of your staff are going to be. Remember, we have 488 employees, 64% of those are part-time, and we'll get into shortly what do we have as our leading trends for the areas of repairs and maintenance as an example. So let's go through what we're seeing. We've talked about the wages. Let's talk about general operating expenses. Our top spends here are seed, fertilizer, chemicals and pesticides, credit card fees, gas and diesel fuel, and equipment replacement or repair. Repairs and maintenance are top spends here, especially with the upgrades that we're making in information technology. We're seeing software maintenance as our leading category under repairs and maintenance, followed by building repair services. Rolling stock parts. Rolling stock parts are those pieces of equipment that are not roadworthy. Think of that mower on a golf course, or other equipment that's used on a golf course. Preventive maintenance and pool and spa chemicals. Our top three utilities are water and sewer, electric and gas. You've probably seen those at your own home as well. So let's look at the actual assessment fee. As several of you in the room know, and those live streaming know, there was a period of time, as can be seen by this blue line on the left graph, where the assessment fee had not increased over time. But what did increase? The inflation rate. So obviously, we had to re-correct that. So we started doing that in 2023, and you can see through last year and the proposal for 2026, we will catch up to what the projected inflation rate is going to be. On the right-hand slide, I want to talk to you, or talk with you, about the cumulative effect that has been seen by the flat assessment fees for a number of years. You can see the green line, which is the inflation rate. You can see where our coffers are from the annual assessments. There's a disparity there of about $8 million. We're going to talk in a few minutes about some of the challenges that we're being faced with as a committee, as well as members of the community. And boy, that $8 million sure would have come in handy. And so we're going to be very transparent in a number of those areas that we are going to be focusing on and have been discussing. But just again, a quick reminder and a refresh of where we are from an annual assessment So let's talk about some additional things you're going to see in 2026. Events, free and ticketed, those numbers are going to increase from a planned 60 number of shows in 2025 to 68 planned shows in 2026. These are a combination of free and ticketed entertainment. With golf, we're looking at improving the course playability with investments in seed, fertilizer, chemicals, and pesticides. Rebranding, the grills, think of the snack shops today, looking at what are they actually? They're grills, and we as members don't have to be a golfer. We can go to those at any point in time and enjoy a meal, enjoy a beverage. Also, looking at rebranding merchandise, to rebrand, to go ahead and focus on specific golf courses. Maybe there's something for Lakes West, maybe there's something different for North, those sorts of things. Information technology. Upgrades will continue on fiber and network, and then lastly, continued upgrades for safety and security. I'll turn it back over to Lynda to discuss the capital side of the equation.
Okay, so, as we've talked about, the capital budget is made up of Okay, so as we've talked about, the capital budget is made up of CIF dollars, which we implemented in, was CIF implemented in 2024? Which was necessary because we couldn't manage our CIF on just assessments and our normal income. So that was a decision that was made by Budget and Finance and the Board to implement that CIF fee when homes were purchased. So CIF dollars, and then in 2024, there's also a 4% contribution of the annual assessments that's added to the capital budget, which is up from a 3% contribution in 2025. So this slide represents the capital spending for next year and is broken into several categories. The first, obviously, is the big spend, and that's coming from capital reserve, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. New capital spending, $758,000. This is also recommended by the facilities department, but not on the reserve study. And a few of the items that make up that $758,000, there's hatches on the tops of our buildings that need to be replaced, and these are compliance and safety issues. That's to the tune of $250,000. We have HVAC, a complete water pipe project at Bell, $225,000. There's a fence wall project along at Quail Run Along Grand for $100K. We have plumbing issues still on the west side at Sundial for another $100K. Sewer pit renovation, I think that's part of an ongoing project at Sundial, $50K. And then there's $33,000 in additional projects that make up that $750. Golf projects, $1 million in golf. In 2010, a decision was made that we stopped leasing our golf equipment. I believe that was the discussion we recently had, and purchased golf equipment. Kim talked about rolling stock and the costs of rolling stock. Some of this golf equipment is 14 or 15 years old. And where I come from, we talk about fixing old equipment with a duct tape and baling wire. Some of this equipment, you can't find parts for, and we're spending extraordinary amounts of time fixing old equipment. So there has been a lot of money that's having to be spent on golf equipment. But we have mowers that are 14 years old, averaging 14 years old, utility vehicles that are 15 years old, pull behind equipment, 15 years old. We have a tractor that's 12 years old, a sprayer that's seven years old. Did I recall that a couple of these pieces of equipment were actually used equipment from the Cardinals that we got in years past? So, pardon me?
And we just purchased more.
And we just purchased more from the Cardinals. So there you go. I mean, so we are looking for ways to save money. But these are big-ticket items, and 200 of that from the golf equipment is, 200,000 of that is allocation for wells and pumps. Then we go to the club allocations. Club allocations, let's see, where's my cheat sheet here for clubs? Well, I lost my cheat sheet for clubs.
TJT green.
Oh, it's on this screen.
Right here.
Oh, thank you. Okay. But I had notes on it, but anyway. This is pretty straightforward. This is the, similar to what the club procedures haven't changed from 2025. So the clubs are allocated $233,300, I'm losing my voice, for 2026. And this has gone through the review process through the same procedure that they did in 2025. So I think this one is self-explanatory for the upcoming year. I don't think there's anything else that we need to talk about for clubs. So, challenges. I'll go back to my own notes, thanks. Let's see. Oh, no, we have Slide 17. Got to back up one. Yeah, the majority, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, the majority of the capital spending, this is the big one. Roofing projects. Obviously, we have a lot of buildings. The biggest part of the roofing budget is a foam roof project at the bowling alley at Lakeview. This is, $822,000 of this budget alone is going to the roofing at the bowling alley at Lakeview. Others include the craft building at Bell, fitness building at Bell, the lower-level offices at Lakeview, and the pro shop and the cart barn at Willow. Pool and spa surfacing, decking and pool equipment. Obviously, with the number of pools we have, it's a lot of money to keep up our pools One of the things that has come up in the five-year planning team, we get a lot of complaints, I think, about the condition of the decks at the pools. And one of the things that we talked about, that it's not just a problem in Sun City with pool decks. One of the things, obviously, in Arizona and the Southwest is the extreme heat, but facilities also tells us that there's problems with the actual products that are available to do pool deckings. So this isn't just a problem that Sun City is facing. Anybody out here in the West Valley is experiencing the same thing. So it's not just a problem for us. Fitness equipment and flooring at Sundial is $412,000. We have HVAC, we have a lot of HVAC, we have 15 projects for HVAC at $405,000. We have vehicle upgrades, we have, for $240,000. The shade structures at the Bell pool are shade structures. One of them alone is $150K estimated. Paving and painting projects, another 178, and all other projects lumped together at $280K. So that's a big part of the capital projects, all from the reserve study. So, and then we went to the club projects, here's where I got confused. So that pretty much takes care of it.
Challenges?
Then we go to the challenges, yes. Thank you. So what's not included in the budget? This is the big one, or one of the big ones. "The five-year planning team and Budget and Finance have had many discussions about the challenges facing our RSC in the near future and the long term. We've covered a lot in today's presentation, but we would be remiss if we didn't talk about the numerous financial challenges that are not included but still need serious consideration." There's, I'm going to start this one off. "There's been no decision made to increase prices for privilege cards or for guest passes. There are pending policy and bylaw changes that may affect the terms of use, but fees are budget items." Yeah, go ahead, Kim.
Thank you. At this point in time for 2026, there are no changes to the PIF or CIF fees for 2026, so they will remain at the 2025 levels. Of Kevin, $4,1500? Thank you.
Master plan. The hot topic of the master plan. As you note up here, the prices that we've indicated that we've been advised from the Board, the estimates that have been provided from interviews with consultants are in the range of $400K to $1 million. That's a big price tag. But there's been a lot of conversation from the members and others that there's a consensus that a master plan is very important as we're facing numerous challenges as a committee. The price of water and the availability of water, rising costs across the entire organization, multi-generational shifts that are happening, but the price tag is very steep. And this is one of those things that we're going to have to consider, and we're going to have to figure out how it's going to happen and how it's going to be paid for.
I'll take the infrastructure upgrade conversation. The business partner in place today, essentially, we have pretty much outgrown their service capabilities. Today, we are receiving services from them that help us manage our member services, golf, accounting and finance, as well as tracking data center usage. So as conversations are taking place on the upgrading of that system, there's also a nice price tag that comes with the upgrade of that system to, quite frankly, make us more functional and bring us into the current century.
Marquee signs. You're all familiar with the marquee signs at the various centers and at the Sun Bowl. They're not functioning. They're out more than they're operating, and it's taking staff hours every week to keep them operating. Repairs are not an option. The technology is outdated and they cannot be fixed. So the question is, are they important enough to the membership to bear the cost to be replaced at $750,000? If not, the monument base would stay, but what will take the place of the marquee? Something attractive that represents each center? That's the discussion taking place. So decisions will have to be made about how we're going to proceed. What takes their place? Or if we do replace them, how are they going to be paid for?
Lastly, there's the balancing act that comes with the clubs' request into the clubs' offices with their wants and needs. So we've talked about what was accomplished in 2025, the planned clubs expenditures for 2026, but yet there remain some high-ticket items on there as well that we are discussing. For example, there's a number of requests from a number of different clubs for additional space. There's also a request to resurface the outdoor shuffleboard court. You can see the projected expense on that is $150,000. There is a request to upgrade the outdoor lighting at Lawn Bowl to include LED lighting. Again, a nice sizable price tag estimate at about $160,000K. Then we have a couple of clubs that would like to upgrade their ventilation. Ventilation is an expensive spend also, projected at about $175K each. So that's for each request on that. And then lastly, flooring upgrade for the Silverstones at Sundial of a projected $100,000. So I kind of sort of go back to, boy, remember that $8 million disparity that we had? Boy, we really wish we could tap into that, but sadly, it doesn't exist for us today. So to give you an example, if we were to go ahead and say, boy, if we could find $500,000 to take care of one or two of these items to move us forward in that area, what does that do for us? We're really facing two choices. One would be, something has to give, right? There's a project that may be planned that we have to say that gets postponed. Maybe it's an equipment purchase that, boy, would really like to do that, but this is maybe the larger need. Or the secondary part of that equation is, there's another way to increase that, and that is to increase the annual assessment. So for example, if we were to say $500,000 to take care of some of these items, that would equate to an additional $20 on the annual assessment, which is on top of the dollars of $680, just to give you an idea. That's the balancing act that we at the Finance Budget and Audit Committee are tasked with and faced with on all of our members' behalf. So it's important that we share what those challenges are and what those impacts are. We're really privileged to somewhat be at a state of affairs of coming out of some crisis firefighting. Lynda mentioned earlier the backlog of deferred maintenance. We're getting close, Kevin, end of '27, we might be...
Don't hold me to it, probably '28.
Won't hold him to it, probably '28. You know, we started with an approximately $20 million in deferred maintenance. Through some scrubbing and recalculation, dropped that down to about $18 million. But you can see where we are needing to spend those dollars on. So again, just something to consider that this committee is being tasked with. So Lynda, I'd like to turn it over to you because I know one of your passions is also the Sun City Foundation, which is a means that we can assist our neighbors that may be struggling with their annual assessment.
Thanks, Kim. And for full disclosure, I'm also treasurer of the Sun City Foundation, so just so we're clear, so I'll disclose that. So why is the foundation included and why is it important? Founded in 1986, the foundation was founded exclusively to carry out the charitable and educational purposes of the RSC. Yes, almost 40 years ago. And many members still don't realize that there's a foundation that supports the RSC. It's important to know what the Articles of Incorporation say about the foundation, so I'm going to paraphrase, just so you have some background. "Its purpose is to promote the well-being and common good of the RSC members, promote and encourage growth of programs which maintain and support the unique Sun City lifestyle provided by the REC Center facilities, foster and support other activities of the RSC which further cultural, educational, and other life enrichment projects of the members of Sun City. And it operates as a nonprofit corporation under the laws of Arizona and consistent with the tax-exempt organizations under 501(c)(3) of the IRS code." That's a mouthful. But there's also another caveat, another section, which is 509(a)(3), which is, this is all technical, but this classifies us as a supporting organization of the RSC, which means all of the resources of the foundation can only support the REC Centers. We cannot make grants or provide resources to other charitable organizations within Sun City. We are exclusively supporting the REC Centers. So that brings me to Bullet Two, our signature program, which we've now actually named Neighbors Helping Neighbors. This has been the longstanding program of the foundation that aids our members by paying annual property assessments for members that have outlived their resources. There are guidelines for members to apply. They must be 67 years old and a property owner. They must be a resident for five years and reside in the home. They must be in good standing for three years prior to the application. The property must be their only, their sole residence. Their assessment is no more than 60 days past due. Their income must not exceed more than 150% of the current federal poverty guidelines. And I want to note that many of our applicants are definitely below the 150% poverty guidelines. Applications are reviewed, interviews are held, eligibilities are determined, and assessments are either granted or denied, and then the assessment is paid directly to the RSC, not to the member. Again, why does this matter? So far this year, the foundation has assisted 94 members with their annual assessments. These payments not only support the bottom line of the RSC by reducing outstanding receivables, but it's important that this program also keeps members active, and it's important to their health and well-being, and it promotes the members of RSC. It goes back to the Articles of Incorporation. As I stated when I opened, it was intent, I opened with the Articles of Incorporation because I intended it to explain that there are many opportunities to promote and encourage the growth of programs which maintain and support the Sun City unique lifestyle. Grants from other foundations and gifts can provide resources for recreation, the arts, education, and other cultural activities that have a significant impact on the finances of RSC that can not only lower member costs but also provide more value by offering enhanced programming, helping keep our facilities and equipment up to date, and in the long run, has the potential to keeping impact fees stable for future buyers. This is our home. This is our community. Would you be surprised to learn that it was either in the late '80s or late '70s or early '80s, the foundation board hired a consultant to do a feasibility study to determine if $5 million could be raised to build a PAC? Yes, to build a PAC. And the findings were that, yes, it would be possible. Sadly, that did not happen. So think about where we would be. But we can't go back, but we can go forward. Was this a major missed opportunity? Like the slide about what happened with our assessments not keeping up with inflation over years, think about all the potential losses of the last 40. A foundation is an incredibly valuable asset. If you think about hospitals and universities and even corporations that have their own foundations. Just like the RSC, we have money in and we have money out. The foundation was fortunate this year to receive a generous grant from Desert Diamond Casino, and we had several large donations from clubs and individuals and the benefit of substantial investment earnings that help us keep our investments fairly stable. Bullet Three, Ways You Can Help. Donations can be made directly to the foundation, personal or clubs. Clubs do not need to make a donation match to the RSC. Clubs do not need to make a donation match to the RCSC. You know that if a club makes a donation to another charitable organization outside of the RCSC, you have to make a match to the RCSC. However, if you make a donation to the foundation, you don't make a donation to the RCSC. But our money all goes to the RCSC, so it's a win anyway. So attend or participate in fundraising events sponsored by either the RCSC or the Sun City Foundation, like golf or bowling tournaments, the Christmas event at Sundial, by participating in the duck races, the golf cart parade, or other Sundial activities that evening. Foundation events, we're planning some events for the coming, maybe yet this fall or for next spring. These all benefit RCSC members and benefits our lifestyle and our community. It's why we live here, we think. We all live here because of the lifestyle and the benefits of the RCSC. And I want to remind you that foundation assets are controlled by the Foundation Board of Directors. They're not controlled by the RCSC Board of Directors, although the RCSC Board of Directors does have majority seat on the Foundation Board according to its bylaws and the articles. But the board still does control how the assets are distributed. With that, individual donations are tax-deductible according to tax laws, but I do, there's a caveat, there are some changes in the tax laws. So as we always say, consult with your tax professionals before you make large contributions. And we can accept any kind of gift, except a supporting organization cannot accept IRA rollovers. So that's my spiel from the Sun City Foundation. But we are a very critical part of the Sun City family, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynda. So in summary, what we've walked through today with you is what did your money do for you or how did it work for you in 2025? As we started, we were talking, we have two different buckets that we're working with. The operating expenses, which is primarily funded through the annual assessment as well as golf. And then we have the capital improvements. Lynda spent some time on the reserve study with that. We've talked through the proposed 2026 operating budget. We talked about the fee increases or no increases. Again, the annual assessment increasing to $680. We also discussed the challenges that we're facing. Again, our tagline of unlimited wants with limited resources. Again, this budget that we presented to you today supports those eight REC Centers, eight golf courses, 120-plus clubs, a softball field, a lake, free entertainment, as well as a dog park, and many more. So we also have those 488 team members that we need to pay as well. And this RCSC budget that we've presented to you today addresses each of those. In closing, where are we with the budget approval process? The Budget, Finance, and Audit Committee has made the recommendation to approve the budget as presented and made the recommendation to move it on to the Board of Directors. The first reading will occur later this month, on October 30th, with the second reading occurring on November 20th. Lastly, the committee has been hard at work on a couple of things for our members. One is a Finance 101 video, and the second will be small workshops that our colleague Dave Wieland, who's in the audience today, will be leading. Stay tuned for the launch of each of those items, again, coming soon. So at this point, we'd like to open the floor to questions and to those individuals live streaming. The way that we will go ahead and manage this today is we will have two questions from the floor here at Sundial, then we'll transition to any questions that exist from the live stream. I understand we have a three-minute, and any speaker, as usual, needs to show their RCSC number. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, my question, do I need to pull the ticket first or am I supposed to step up?
Feel free to step up to the podium. Thank you.
You mentioned the items that weren't included in the budget, and then you mentioned for another $20 on top of the $680, it would have, it would generate another $500 million.
$500,000.
$500,000, I'm sorry, $500,000. Okay, so would you pick and choose out of, from the budgets, from the things that weren't included in that budget? Would you just pick and choose from there? Or how would you do that if it went from $680 to $700? Would you pick something off of that, items that weren't included in the budget? And how would you choose? What would you choose out of there?
We used, we used that as sort of an example when we were brainstorming about, for example, if we picked $500,000 for the master plan, for example, would we do that next year and increase it? That's how much it would cost to do the master plan, for example. So that was just one item.
Okay. So the budget you're really considering now is to raise it to $680, the status quo?
Status quo. Right now, we're just at $680.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Those are just the challenges that we had. Yep.
Thank you for your question. Any other questions from the floor?
Mary Dolman Schopper, 1-2-8-4-4-2. If someone new to Sun City is coming in purchasing a house, how much is the PIF fee for them now?
$4,000.
$4,000 for the PIF.
And then there is the CIF fee above that?
The CIF fee is $1,500, correct.
So that $5,500 then goes into the operating budget?
$1,500 goes into the operating budget, the CIF, the capital improvement fund.
The things I talked about, capital, $1,500 goes into the capital fund for capital improvements, the things I talked about, the big things like roofs and paving and pools and everything over $300,000, up to $300,000.
Yeah. So when the presentation started, then I misheard it. I thought the operating, the operating budget was both the operating daily expenses, if you will, plus CIF.
Correct. There's, we talked about two parts, the assessments that pays the daily, the things Kim talked about, the things that go in there, the golf fees, the assessments, and then the capital, like the, more the bricks and mortar kind of stuff, not to build a building like Sundial, but to repair roofs and to pave parking lots and to do the bigger ticket items, things over $5,000 up to $300,000. That's the capital, and PIF is over $300,000. PIF, the $4,000 fee, pays for items over $300,000. Capital pays for things $5,000 to $300,000.
Right. The PIF, I've got that all straightened out. But as it relates to the operating budget, is CIF in there or not?
Mary, you're confused.
Yes.
The fee assessment, the annual fee assessment pays the operating expenses, the salaries, the utilities, all that kind of stuff. The CIF money pays for capital projects, which is a separate budget and a separate category of repairs or replacements. In other words, if we want to buy a new pickup truck, that comes out of CIF.
But it's part of the responsibility of the Budget and Finance Committee. We have two pots of money that we're responsible for, the assessment pool and the capital pool.
Got it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Clear as mud.
Thank you.
It actually made sense.
Oh, good. Mike, do we have any questions from the live stream audience?
We do now.
Wow.
Oh, no.
And I apologize, I forgot to, I forgot to introduce the rest of the staff. I talked about Mike, but Eddie's here from...
They're not that important, you spoke about them.
Director of Golf and Kevin McCurdy, Director of Finance. So most people know my regrets, gentlemen.
Hello.
Are you allowed to ask questions?
Why can't I? I have a couple. One gentleman asked you if you had extra money and you could pick, who's going to pick those projects that we would do? That would be the COC does that. The projects go to the COC, and they picked that.
Club projects.
Club projects.
Yeah, it was for the club projects.
Not everything on that list is club-related.
Well, the one they showed, the ones they couldn't do for clubs.
Well, there's some of them were clubs, yes, but there's a big list.
And my other question was, I think you had six more trucks or vehicles for 2026. Are we about finished with vehicles after that?
No. That will, that will get us caught up with the lion's share of the vehicles, Steve, but we still have onesies, twosies going forward. I mean, last, this year, last year was a big year as far as catching up. We were replacing 12, 13, 15-year-old vehicles, but we're getting caught up on that.
And when we, how much did we do last year in deferred maintenance? Or this year, I should say. What number did we hit?
So I want to be really kind of careful with that word. When we first looked at the reserve study back in 2023, 2024, there were about $20 million worth of things on the reserve study that had extended beyond their estimated useful life. As Lynda mentioned, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to be replaced immediately. You can still get a lot of useful life out of a 10-year car, as an example. We have been chipping away at that. At the end of 2026, we estimate that we'll have about $5.2 million worth of assets on the reserve study that are beyond their estimated useful life. Again, does that mean I have to, you know, come up with $5 million to replace all that? No. It just means that if you just look at the estimated useful life, we've had an asset or multiple assets that are beyond that. So we're slowly, we're coming down from that $20 million. By the end of next year, that will be about $5 million, and we'll continue to work that off over time.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's, I think it's important to note that deferred maintenance is an unusual title for that pool of things. When we think of maintenance as people, we think of, you know, I've got to fix my gutters, I've got to fix this in the house. That whole pot of things that were deferred was a lot of equipment, a lot of vehicles, plus things to buildings. So there was a lot of things that most of us wouldn't consider maintenance, it's just things that, that weren't bought when they should have been, and a lot of it is, millions of dollars is equipment.
I either fell asleep during part of this, or you didn't discuss.
That golf pays for itself.
You were, from what you said, I would take away that our fees are paying for our golf, and that's not the case. They're paying for part of it, probably, but it's, golf is, income is paying for them, not, not our assessment.
The goal, Jim, is that golf will break even?
Yes.
We didn't achieve that last year.
I understand, but we didn't really talk about the differential there, and we're not quite meeting the plan or anything about it, or at least I didn't hear that. So I'd like you to just discuss that.
We didn't get way into the weeds, but I think if we backed up to, I'm not sure which slide Kim had up on the cost centers, maybe, or when she looked at, when we looked at the pig and the bucket for income and the places where we have income, and slide 12.
Ellen, can you bring up 2026 budget cost centers? Slide 12, please.
Does that one have the income expense?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to talk to it more than me, but...
Golf does have a significant impact on the income side. It's our second biggest income.
The projected income for 2026 for golf is about $9.5 million. Again, we ran through the various fees. Eddie and the Golf Advisory Committee are discussing a number of initiatives to improve that revenue stream as well. We also need to remember weather is always an impact for us as well, whether it is extreme heat or rainy weather like we had yesterday. Those are, those are items that will be there, and I think the fact that the, what line is it, Eddie? On the fees, staying flat, the top line.
Non-resident.
The passes.
In the public.
Yeah, thank you.
Some of them are maxing out relative to our competition.
So Tom's statement was some of those are maxing out relative to the various golf courses that we're competing against in the valley.
I think it's also important to note with the, on the golf budget, that I believe that we're having, we've got a more realistic budget this year than we've had in the past. We're actually projecting a lower operating income, even though some of our, a number of our fees are going up, so that we're, we're projecting a lower amount of operating income, a lower amount of other things, so that the budget is right now for golf is about an operating profit of about $86,000, which, you know, for a $10 million budget is a very small amount. So we're trying to be a lot more realistic in what we expect for revenue this year compared to other years, so we don't run into the, hopefully we won't run into the big deficit that we've been experiencing.
So maybe, so I know there's confusion here because I sense that. But when we talk about golf, there's a couple pieces, and one is just the operating side of that. Pay the workers, pay for the seed, pay for diesel fuel, pay for water, those kinds of things. And that is mainly coming from the green fees, so that the idea being that golf breaks even on an operating basis. The other side of that coin is what Kim and Lynda were talking about is the capital side. So the mowers, the, the big purchase items, irrigation systems, pumps, and, and these major capital expenditures to keep a golf course working, those are not necessarily being covered by green fees. It's great when we have a year that, that we earn enough, that we can contribute towards those capital expenses, but this budget for 2026 does not contemplate that. It basically says for an operating basis, golf breaks even. The capital side, and I know this is confusing, between CIF and PIF kind of things, but, but those capital pieces are not, are coming from the PIF fees and the CIF fees, and there's, it gets complicated, which Anita was trying to explain here, between what qualifies as PIF and what qualifies as CIF. But for what, what we're trying to present today is the non-PIF capital expenditures. And in, and for golf, that are vehicles, generally speaking, vehicles, mowers, pumps, irrigation types of things. Yes?
I have a live stream question.
Go ahead.
Jean Totten, member number 148753. Previously, RCSC had a rainy day fund of over $11 million. Where did that money go? Thank you.
Do you want to take that, Kevin?
Thank you, Kevin.
So there was, there was a term that was thrown around here quite often a few years ago called carryforward, which is a fancy way of just basically saying that, you know, we made some money over the years and put that into a bank account. We also had a capital reserve fund, which was $5 million, which really truly was a reserve fund. It was money that was put into an account and just left alone in case we needed it. We have, over the past couple of years, we have increased our capital spend from roughly $3 million a year to over $6 million a year. So we've slowly been utilizing that carryforward money to catch... So we've slowly been utilizing that carry forward money to catch up on a lot of what was being referred to as deferred revenue. We're sitting with about $12 million of capital money right now in our account, and again, we're, we're bringing money into that account from CIF fees and from an allocation of that assessment, about 4% of our assessment money, and then we use that money to spend on the capital projects. So carry forward was probably $11 million a couple of years ago. That's down to about $5 to $6 million now, and with the, with the reserve that was existing at the time, about $5 million, that makes up that $11, $12 million that's sitting in the balance sheet right now.
Did, did we say we've spent like $18 million in the last three years?
On capital?
Capital? Six, 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 15?
About 16.
16?
Yeah.
I mean, this, this whole thing was why we basically had to put, felt we needed to implement the CIF fee, because we had to keep up with capital expenses. This is, we couldn't keep going without finding that other resource, so, and that's when we merged the, the old carry forward and that reserve into that other pot of money. So it's all accounted for. Right.
It better be.
We know it's on the balance sheet. Yeah.
Andre Caspo, 1-5-3-0-0-0. I think maybe this was a question for Preston. On the golf pass for the resident no fee, when you raised it last year, there were a lot of people who didn't renew that. And now this year, you're raising it again 12%, where you're raising the surcharge pass only 8%. Is that going to cause some issues?
I anticipate that it probably will, yes. But I think it's something we have to do. I think it's also important to note that the, when you look at what our competing golf courses do in the area, the closest annual no fee pass to ours is Sun City West, and theirs is $3,600. So even though we're raising it, we're still keeping it very, and that's the, we're keeping it very competitive and actually lower than, than others as a result. It's unfortunate that we're having to raise it, but this also goes back to the same sort of thing we saw with the PIF fees, is that, that annual no fee pass for six or seven years remained at like $1,550, and that wasn't raised over a long period of time either. So we're, like, we're trying to catch up on assessment fees, we're trying to catch up on the, on those pass fees also.
Okay. And now the squeak wheel usually gets the oil. I brought this up last year.
Yep.
And as you're raising the annual assessment for up to $680, which I know it's needed, but again, the foundation is going to be pressed. And as I said last year, there are some people, no matter how high it goes, they don't have a problem. There are some people who will always have a problem, and there are some people who will have a problem maybe to pay the whole thing on the day it's due. The same thing with golf passes. And I brought this up to you last year. Maricopa County, when you pay your taxes, you pay it in halves. The golf course that I belong to in Wisconsin, we paid it in three payments. Where are we at with that? That's what I brought up last year. I have not heard anything positive yet, so I'm wondering how we're going to help those people who want to still do all those things, and especially the foundation. I know you're, have a lot of people come, and at $680, there's going to be some people, when it comes due, they're not going to have $680. They might have $300. How can they pay half? Because you don't have any way of having them to do pay half. So.
Can I just take that? Under discussed.
From a foundation perspective, if our members can, you know, they may say, I can pay $250, and then the foundation would pay the balance. As far as payment plans, that's a, Kevin has to address.
Well, actually, we, we have discussed that, and we know that, that there is a big impact on many people with the increase of the fees. And so to help kind of lessen that, that impact, we are going to try to have a payment plan where you put 50% down and then have 60 days to pay off the rest. So that will give people at least two months to kind of lessen that financial burden, all in one impact.
This is for the golf no fee pass only, though?
Yes, it's for the golf no fee pass. And then also, when you mentioned the surcharge going up only about $100, that money will be made up because we are increasing the daily fee of the surcharge as well. So rather than going $300 up right off the bat, we will make up that money over the course of the year as they come to play.
There are no other live stream?
I have one. Regarding golf, can you put a percentage figure on what comes out of our yearly assessment? Each person equals what percent? I don't know what that meant, but. Regarding golf, can you put a percentage figure on what comes out of our yearly assessment?
What percentage of our yearly assessment supports golf?
I think, I'm, I'm maybe putting words in somebody's mouth here, but it sounds like what's being asked is, is how much or what percentage of every member's annual assessment is going to golf? And, and as Preston just discussed, the intent is that golf on an operating basis will, will break even or, or generate a slight profit. So in, in respect to the annual assessment, you could say that 0% of the annual assessment is going to golf. The capital and PIF is a different story, where obviously, you know, we just spent $6 million on quail run. So part of the PIF and CIF dollars are going to golf, but if we do achieve our goal of breaking even on an operating basis with golf, then none of the annual assessment money will go to golf operations.
I think we're good.
Come to Dave.
It's not what you think. Yeah, I think it was, oh, Dave Wieland, 17077. When you were talking about the foundation, one of the last things you said concerned IRAs, and you talked about you couldn't accept rollover.
Yep.
But what if, as part of my estate plan, the last job I worked at for a few years, I have a rinky-dink IRA of $5,000, and I want to donate it upon my death to the foundation.
I think you can make us the beneficiary.
Yeah.
But you can't make a distribution, I should have said you can't make an RMD distribution.
Ah, okay.
That's the difference.
Now, now, no, okay.
Yes, but I think you could make the foundation.
Yeah, because it's a POD.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I misspoke, I should have said RMD distribution. But you can, yes, you could make us the beneficiary.
Okay, thank you.
They will be glad to accept your money.
Yes, and we would be very happy to accept that.
I'm going to live as long as possible, just, just to give you a hard time.
I have the form, I'll have your sign.
Come see us, Dave.
Any other questions from the floor? Sure.
So in my, in my school administration days, we had, we bought a school bus every year, because another one went out of service. So it was just constantly in the, so do we have a plan with not just the machines on golf courses, but I know we have all our maintenance trucks and what other, other maintenance equipment you have? Do you have them on a schedule so that you know that, okay, you bought one, let's say you bought a pickup truck last, this year? So in 10 years, does that one, do you have each one of them on a schedule?
You just perfectly described what a reserve study is.
That's the reserve study.
That's, that's what, okay, that's what that is, all right.
Any other questions from the floor? Any other questions, Mike, from live stream?
Nope.
All right, we'll sit.
I was about.
Anything that I need?
Too late, too late.
You're correct.
All right, not hearing no further questions from either the floor or from the live stream, I will adjourn the meeting, and thank you for coming and participating.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Life. Can you clap for?